Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our city council chambers as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll. Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me in stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Madam Clerk? We are at proclamations. We have two proclamations today. The first recognizes International Mission of Mercy. We have present Dr. Michael Danner, Dr. Harry Watts, who is president of the Peoria District Dental Society. Would you please come forth, gentlemen? I'd like to read the proclamation and then we welcome you to have comments. Whereas the Illinois State Dental Society Foundation has host the Mission of Mercy, a free dental clinic that will be held at the Peoria Civic Center on June 28th and June 29th of this year. Whereas the Illinois Mission of Mercy strives to provide access to free dental care while placing a high priority on patients suffering from dental infections. And whereas in 2022, the Mission of Mercy Dental Clinic provided 1,159 extractions, 1,944 dental cleanings, 54 partial dentures, 58 root canals, 610 x-rays, and too many smiles to count. And whereas this year's event will provide free dental care to over 2,000 children and adults. And whereas more than 1,000 dentists, dental hygienists, dental assistants, lab technicians, and general volunteers will donate their time and clinical skills to help patients receive much-needed oral health care. Whereas this will be the seventh biannual Mission of Mercy held in the state of Illinois. The last time Peoria hosted was in 2014 and was one of their most successful events. Now therefore I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby thank all the dental professionals who will be donating their time and expertise on June 28th and 29th for Mission of Mercy Days in Peoria, Illinois. Thank you so very much.[350.31][350.31](Applause).
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the members of the Peoria City Council for affording us this honor. A special thanks to Councilman Dennis Seer and his work in promoting our Illinois Mission of Mercy in Peoria. On behalf of our co-chairs, Dr. Chris Corey, Dr. Tim Schwartz, and myself, our I-Mom Coordinator, Ms. Linda Thomas, and the current President of the Peoria District Dental Society, Dr. Harry Watts, we would like to encourage you to please come by the Civic Center on June 28th or 29th and see all the good we will be doing for our community. It truly is an amazing life-changing event for our patients and ourselves. Thank you again for this time and recognition.
Absolutely. I do want to ask Councilman Seer if you want to make any remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It takes a retired professional hockey player to talk about dental care, I guess. These gentlemen are not telling the whole story. They've been around, you know, many, many years in this area, and it's been 12 years now, going on 14. So every two years, they go around different areas and provide millions of dollars of dental care for free, for free for these communities. Now they're coming back in Peoria for the second time. And these are my friends, and I've known them a long time. They do great work. So I thank you very much for all you do for all the communities, and especially for this area right here, Tri-County area. Thank you. This is, you guys are great. I mean, to give all your professional services for free, it's just incredible. So thank you very much.
Tremendous gift to our community. Thank you, gentlemen. Our second proclamation recognizes the 50th anniversary of Kidder Music. Councilman Seer also brought forth this proclamation. We have in our presence the owner of Kidder Music, James Kidder, as well as Edie Kidder, who's the Secretary of the Organization, and Beth Kider-Hoolahan, who is the President. Will you all three please come forth? Whereas the government of the City of Peoria, Illinois celebrates and values our small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas Kidder Music Service Incorporated is a small business that has operated in the city of Peoria since 1974. Wow. And whereas Kidder Music Service Incorporated has always placed a strong emphasis on supporting the schools in our city and surrounding area by providing instrument rentals for beginning students, accessory items used by the various instruments, appropriate sheet music for all levels of student musicians, and repair services for all types of band and orchestra instruments. Whereas Kidder Music Service Incorporated has expanded their support system to include inventory and services for more advanced musicians who wish to upgrade an instrument, find more challenging music, or protect their instruments with annual repair maintenance agreements. And whereas Kidder Music Service Incorporated has also provided various types of products and services to church and civic organizations such as, but not limited to, the Peoria Municipal Band, the Peoria Symphony Orchestra, the Peoria Area Senior Citizens Band, the Peoria Area Civic Corral, the Philharmonic Corral, the Morton Civic Chorus, and many more. And whereas Kidder Music Service Incorporated has expanded its facilities by adding another building to serve as a private lesson studio, offering a wide range of private and group lessons for voice, orchestra, and band instruments. Whereas the ancient Greek philosopher Plato said, "Music gives a soul to the universe, wings to the mind, flight to the imagination, and life to everything." The City of Peoria would like to thank you for giving the gift of music to thousands of people during your 50 years in business. Now therefore I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby celebrate the 50th anniversary of Kidder Music Service Incorporated in Peoria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, Dennis Seer in particular, and Stacy for your help in making this happen. I didn't, we didn't think that this was going to be a big deal when we were thinking about it's going to be our 50th, but I found out that it is a pretty big deal. And we are very fortunate. I get all the accolades, which I deserve, of course.
Of course.
But this is a true family venture. My wife of 59 years, and I entered this together in 1974, and my daughter has been working in the business off and on, and is now the president of the company and carrying on her, our good deeds. It's a happy business. It's a fun business. And we have had a couple of associations in the music industry give us awards, and now with the city council, that tops it off. Dennis, I think this is our hat trick.
That's outstanding.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your attention.
You're welcome. Councilman Seer, any additional comments?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I came to Peoria 40 years ago, played for the Peoria Rivermen, and Jim and his family, he was one of the first family I met when I came to Peoria. I fell in love with them right away since they were hockey fans. And over the years, we've built a relationship, and I've used their services with my two little daughters a few times. So it's really an honor, Jim, for us and for me to be part of your celebration tonight. And congratulations, 50 years. It's a great accomplishment, and I'm glad you're right here in Peoria, Illinois. Thank you for all you did in the last 50 years.
Madam Clerk? We are at the approval of the minutes. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board Meeting held May 14th, 2024 as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 24-146 is a communication from the City Manager and Interim Director of Human Resources with a request to approve existing property and commercial auto insurance coverages with Liberty Mutual Insurance through Alliant Insurance Services, Inc. at a one-year cost in an amount not to exceed $480,000, including fees. 24-147 is a communication with a request to approve a one-year contract with Hewlett-Packard Enterprise Green Lake to replace the information systems data center equipment and provide off-site disaster recovery with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms in the amount of $218,596. 24-148 is a communication with a request to approve a professional services agreement with Patrick Engineering for corridor identification and development step one in the amount of $400,000. 24-149 is a communication with requests for the following. A, approve an agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for the city's participation in the D4 ITS 2024 project in various counties. And B, approve a funding resolution for the city's cost participation in the D4 ITS 2024 project in the amount of $42,336 plus contingencies. 24-150 is a communication with requests to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving the rezoning of certain property from a Class R6 multifamily residential district to a Class C1 general commercial district for the property located at 2900 West Lake Avenue. 24-151 is a communication with requests to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R4 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 308 East Odell Place. 24-013 is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Counsel, and Director of Public Works with a request to adopt an ordinance establishing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area. And 24-152 is a communication with requests to approve the site application for a Class K Rental Hall liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for the Coventry Room LLC, doing business as Coventry Room at 6001 North Knoxville, Suite 100, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number 24-149.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Madam Mayor, mine was also 149.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-149 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following. A, approve an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the city's participation in the D4 ITS 2024 project in various counties. And B, approve a funding resolution for the city's cost participation in the D4 ITS 2024 project in the amount of $42,336. And we will need several votes on each, please.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a, I wanted a little bit of clarification as to what this project will do. I understand it's a modernizing, and I had a question about a particular location that I thought would have been included. Maybe it's not part of IDOT's locations, but is there a representative who can address that?
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Director Powers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are you clear on what the question is, Director Powers?
I think, well, you had one particular location.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't sure, were you wanting to know what the program is?
Well, I was looking at the, I was talking about the type of work, and it had locations, Illinois 180, MacArthur, and Lincoln, and Jefferson. I was wondering about whether or not Howett should have been included. It is along the IDOT sites as state roads, and it, there is a traffic signal at the intersection of Howett and Western.
Okay, again, I can address it generally, that IDOT uses a similar scoring mechanism as we do, meaning for local signals and signal control modernization. And it may just not be on this year's list. I'd be more than glad to contact them and ask them if they have Howett on their radar for future years, if you'd like. I mean, if that's, if it's about that particular location. This is an annual program that they do.
Could you? I'd like to know if there are plans to include that site.
Sure.
Because it certainly is part of IDOT's, one of their locations.
I will certainly contact them.
I don't want to assume that they're going to include it in the future because, as you know, that may not happen.
I will contact them and get back with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, I'll go ahead and, should we move to approve it?
Item A.
Yes, okay. Item A. I move to approve that item A be approved as so noted.
Were you seconded that, Councilmember Kelly? I know you want to speak to it, but were you also seconding that motion?
I will second.
Okay, all righty. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Director, I, we've had a number of discussions around the horseshoe about speed cameras and red light violation cameras. And I believe it's our understanding that our authority to put out such equipment, or the state's authority, or whatever, depends upon a legislative action in Springfield. There are several counties in the northern part of the city, of the state, that have that authority specifically. And I think it would be, one of the things I'd like to know, a side question, is that do any of these upgrades facilitate a further upgrade to that kind of equipment, or do we have to start over if we have that kind of equipment?
Director, before you respond to that, I just want to defer to the City Manager.
So, so from a legislative standpoint, Councilman, we have no legislative authority granted by the state for us to put speed cameras or red light cameras in any location. That, the General Assembly has made it clear, they've, they've left that to the collar counties and the metropolitan Chicago area, and no place else. So there is no opportunity for us to utilize that technology here. Now, having said that, I'll turn it over to the Director to talk about the technology and whether or not it could be adapted. That's a second question.
Before that, before that occurs, my understanding was that we were going to ask the legislature to expand that power to Peoria County. Are you saying that we've done that and they've turned us down, or?
There was no interest in moving any legislation forward from our local legislative delegation, nor from any other legislator downstate to move that at this point in time.
Okay. Then, Mr. Director, we need to go no further.
Okay. I was going to say, it would be a significant technology investment.
Yes, I'm sure.
But doable, but significant. Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor?
You're welcome. So we have a motion to approve item A. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Council, Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve item B.
Councilmember Kelly?
I will second.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-151 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R4 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 308 East Odell Place.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with the petitioner on this and expressed some of the concerns I had shared with my colleagues previously on Airbnb's short-term rentals in the residential areas. And in this case, I am prepared to support it with the amendment that there is no on-street parking. So that will be part of the special use for this particular short-term rental, that there is no on-street parking. And with that amendment, I would move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second to that amendment? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Councilmember Hayes? I mean, Councilmember, whoa, okay.
Field promotion.
I don't know whether that's an upgrade or a downgrade.
graciously decline that opportunity. Thank you. The motion, as you phrased it, Mayor, was to amend. So now the amended item would be in order up for passage.
Okay, that's correct.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So we just voted to amend, and now we're going to actually vote on the action.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So I need the motion, Councilmember Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Thank you for that correction. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, Madam Clerk?
We are on to regular business. 24-153 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution for the preliminary plat of Gray Oak subdivision for the property identified as parcel identification numbers 09-19-400-005 and 09-20-151-003 in a Class R3 single-family residential district generally located west of Knoxville Avenue, east of Allen Road, north of Hickory Grove Road, and south of Cedar Hills Drive.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to do is ask our Assistant Community Development Director, Leah Allison, to come forward and just walk through this item for you.
Thank you. Director Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Council, Madam Mayor. So this is a 86-acre, just shy of 87 acres actually, tract of land proposed for single-family residential development, 115 lots. Lot sizes range from just shy of a half acre to 1.68 acres. Density is well below the maximum allowed. It's about 1.3 dwelling units per acre, so it's a low-density development. It will be served with public sewer, public water. Access is provided off of Knoxville Avenue into the subdivision. Just to get a little bit about the process of a review, before you is the preliminary plat. That's where you're reviewing the totality of the development from all of the 115 lots. If approved, the developer then takes the time to fine-tune it, working through all the requirements of the city's regulations. When development proceeds at that point, it's typically in phases of the subdivision. It's not likely to be all 115 lots at once. But with each phase of development, we require a final plat. And that final plat is submitted to staff for an administrative review. We compare it to the city's regulations and to what you have approved with this preliminary plat, making sure that it complies and matches. And that final plat, again, with each phase, once recorded, allows for the development of the lots, for the build-out of those lots. So today's the preliminary plat. At some point in the future, will be the final plat, but through an administrative process. Any questions that I can answer at this point?
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant Director Allison, thank you very much for all your work on this project, the many meetings we had. And I also want to say thank you to Mr. Manager and Mayor Ali for the meeting today. And I also want to say thank you to all my constituents. Some of them are here tonight for all the emails and phone calls, and I appreciate all of you getting involved. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to make a motion. Move to approve his resolution for the preliminary plat of Gray Oak subdivision with a waiver to allow two cul-de-sacs greater than 400 feet in length, only one vehicle access as currently designed from Knoxville Avenue into the subdivision. Phase one to include three detent- Phase one to include three detention ponds controlling the five hundred year storm, and additional phases of the development should have, or shall have, should say should, shall have sufficient ponds to control the five hundred year storm.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Discussion? Passes unanimously.
If we could treat that similarly.
Is this, is the same thing?
It amended the item that was published.
Okay, we just voted on the amendment.
The item's up for passage. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We just voted on the amendment. Councilmember Seer?
Same motion, move to approve.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to unfinished business. Twenty-four dash one hundred is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to accept a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the fiscal year 2023 Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Grant in the amount of $2 million for sidewalks in six one six oh five.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item was deferred for thirty days. We did work with Councilwoman Jackson to include some additional locations near Manuel High School that will be part of the package that'll be going out. So at this point in time, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but we feel like it's ready to go.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for your due diligence in this. And I just want to say, this has been in the works for over two years now. And I just want to kudos to former Congresswoman Sherri Bustos, who initially thought it would be just one million, but she was gracious enough to get us $2 million for sidewalks in six one six oh five. And I am grateful to all the hard work that city staff has done. And I just want to say, this doesn't begin to scratch the surface for the need for sidewalks, not only in six one six oh five, but throughout the city. So with that, Madam Mayor, may I go ahead and make a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Item number twenty-four one hundred, which does provide, it's a request to accept a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for FY 2023 Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Grant in the amount of $2 million for sidewalks in six one six oh five.
Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Comments, questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for information's sake, I'm in favor of this motion. But are there sidewalks being put in under this plan in places where there are no sidewalks at all? Okay, that's.
Yes, and Mr. Manager, can you break that down?
So we're looking at, trying to address areas around most of the schools and other areas of potential pedestrian activity. So we're trying to fill gaps where there are no sidewalks, and then also looking at intersections, so we can make sure that they're doing ADA-compatible intersections and looking at that. So if you look at the map in the back of the packet, you'll see a number of intersections. Those are going to be where we're doing the ADA work. Where you have the longer stretches of that, that crosses houses, that's where we're putting in new sidewalk.
Thank you. I assumed that that was the case. It's almost a scandal that we have large, older neighborhoods, they've been around a long time, still don't have sidewalks. So I'm very happy to support this.
So am I. Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to new business.
I actually have another unfinished business item. At the last council meeting, I notified everyone that there was a pending vacancy with the pending resignation of City Treasurer Stephen Morris. I'd like to announce a process to accept applications to fill that interim city treasurer vacancy by sometime after this meeting is over, begin a process for accepting interest forms and resumes in application for the interim vacancy with materials to be submitted no later than Sunday, June the sixteenth. That gives a little over two weeks for individuals to respond. They do have to live within the city of Peoria, and they would fill the term until the term is up, which ends May of 2025. The general election for the city treasurer will be held April first, 2025. The city treasurer is responsible for the administration and management of the collection, verification, recording, and depositing of all taxes, fines, and fees due to the city. The vacancy of the office will be filled by the appointment of the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. The information that will go out will identify the annual salary for the position. There is a slated salary that's paid by the city, and then there's a stipend that's paid by the township. The salary of the township was actually zeroed out, and the collector part of the position is actually being handled by the county treasurer, Nicole. I think we're pretty much all aware of that. To be considered for the vacancy, the applicant must have been a resident of the city of Peoria for at least one year and is otherwise staturally eligible for the office. A person is not eligible to take the oath of office for a municipal office if that person at the time of, for, excuse me, at the time required for taking the office is in arrears in the payment of a tax or other indebtedness due to the city. And then there's some criteria associated with being convicted of infamous crime like bribery or perjury and other felonies and so forth. But regardless of the process, I'm very interested in appointing a qualified person who will fill the term, who is not interested in running for the office. And this is in preference of not appointing, not providing any unfair advantage to someone during that time period. But this will be a very open and transparent process, so we want to encourage those that may be qualified and interested to submit an interest form along with their resume. There will be a website, both on the treasurer's page, on the mayor's page, and then on the regular city page, there will be a link that will take you to that process. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Kelly?
As usual, Madam Mayor, I would ask that those applications be forwarded to the council as well. We, you nominate, we approve.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to share those applications.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbach?
I'm sorry, I had another new item.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Jackson?
That was a mistake. I have new business.
Okay, that's all right. So that's my other unfinished business item. Are we ready to move to new business? Okay, any new business? Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Tomorrow afternoon at three thirty, the Public Works Department is going to be hosting a walk audit along Spring Street. As you all remember, we are beginning the preparation for the reconstruction of Spring Street from Glen Oak all the way to Adams Street. And it's very early in the game here, but we want to invite the residents, the stakeholders in that part of town to come out and walk it with us. This is something Public Works did with the Wisconsin Avenue project, and it was very enlightening to actually walk that corridor, to get the feel of what it's like having buses drive by you as you're walking down the sidewalk and whatnot. So I just want to encourage the folks that live in that area or work in that area to come join us. The kickoff point will be at Glendale and Spring Street tomorrow at three thirty, and we figure it'll be about a two-hour thing, so between three thirty and five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next time the Peoria City Council meets, this event will be over, so I'd like to say something about it. This would be the Moss Avenue Antique Sale and Festival. It'll be Saturday, the eighth of June. This is its forty-third year. Eight in the morning to three in the afternoon. There'll be antiques, vintage, handcrafted items set up along eight blocks of historic Moss Avenue in Peoria with great food available and live music. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four items I'd like to talk about. The first one, Mr. Manager, was brought to my attention today, and it was with regards to the CSO work. They're doing a fabulous job. The work has moved around to different locations, and sometimes it tends to encompass a business and/or an agency, in this case, Simon's Mortuary. And it's the kind of business that has to have access all the time. Is there some way we can reach out to them to make sure that in the event of a funeral or service at that facility, people have access in and out, just so that they'll know that they can gain entry without any barriers? And I, yeah.
We'd be happy to reach out and talk.
Okay, and there may be occasion as the project moves around, there may be other businesses, but in courtesy to the businesses and folks that are already in those neighborhoods, if we could kind of let them know, we're here working, you know, there might be some disturbances with entrances to your driveways, et cetera, but we are here to make sure that that does not become an impediment. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. That was brought to my attention today. There have been a series of events that have happened that have necessitated the need to pull ordinances for, I think, review, discussion, possible amendments. And Corporation Counsel Hayes, I want to thank you. You've already begun some of that work for me, but I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention, some of those ordinances that I think we should review. One deals with black parties in and around city neighborhoods, and this does not pertain to neighborhood associations, but I'm referring to just private black parties. People have made requests to hold a black party. In one particular instance, it blocked off a secondary roadway on a weekend, and it creates a problem when you've got, in this case, live entertainment, in this case, the rest of the neighborhood was not notified in advance. And so there were some concerns prior to and in the aftermath from residents that I had an opportunity to talk to about it. So having said that, I think it would be necessary to revisit the city's ordinance. And Council, Corporation Counsel Hayes reminded me, informed me, that our ordinances dates back to 1957 as it relates to black parties. And there's no vetting. People come and pay $25, they get barricades to block roads, and there's no formal vetting process. So it becomes real easy to host a black party, and in some cases, probably have alcohol or, in the instance, I witnessed a live band playing six or eight hours, and it created a bit of a disturbance. I'm not opposed to this, but I believe if you want to do some of these activities, maybe a public park or a private venue might render itself much more successful because you don't, you don't create an imposition on the residents in that community. They don't have to listen to it. And so I think black parties would be better served in private venues, public parks. We have several beautiful parks throughout the city. And I think the vetting process needs to have stricter regulations that would not allow free access. And so if we could revisit the city ordinance with regards to that, I would welcome opportunities for debate discussions to see what we can do to improve that, because it's summertime, and I've heard there are others that are planned. So we could pull that one. The second one involves the property management companies that manage apartments complexes in and around the city. I have been privy to witness some very disturbing activity over the last six months as it relates to property-managed apartment complexes in and around the city. And it's, I have a lot of, how can I describe it, illegal activity. And I think that we need to look at an ordinance, if we have one. I'm interested in finding out if we've got a plan of operations for some of these apartment complexes. It may not be necessary for all, but there have been some, in my estimation, that have become chronic nuisances. And so I think it would behoove us as a city to review this specifically, to see if there's a plan of operations as it relates to safety, maintenance, overall daily maintenance, and in particular, security. Because I don't, I believe that if we don't get a handle on this, we're going to have a situation where we're going to have some real problems, some real problems. I've witnessed some things that have just been disturbing to me. And I don't want to mention any names, but I'll go so far as to say, people, homeless people gaining access, sleeping in stairwells, doors being promptly opened, and this is of a real concern to me. So I think this would necessitate our reviewing some of these policies and looking to see where we can tighten up, improve, and overall, make the overall policies run safer. Because at the end of the day, I believe people throughout the city of Peoria have a right to live in a safe, clean, and secure apartment complex, regardless of where they live. The third one relates to ATVs and golf carts and motorbikes, and I don't know how, if, well, if we have an ordinance or how old it is, but I've witnessed ATVs on city streets and. if we have an ordinance or how old it is, but I've witnessed ATVs on city streets. And I became concerned because I pulled over my car, the guy, teenager, was speeding so fast. I don't know if we have a policy, but maybe it's time to look at it. A couple of years ago, I was especially disturbed when there was a golf cart on city streets, and it became especially concerning to me when the young woman had a toddler on the golf cart with her. And I know those golf carts don't have seat belts. And, you know, motorbikes, you know, I know we can't control all of this, but I'm really, really concerned when we've got minors speeding up and around city streets to no avail. So if we could pull those ordinances, I would welcome conversation with my colleagues around the Horseshoe to see how we can improve or enhance our city policy as it relates to those. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to recognize Councilman Grab for the wonderful job he did along with Stacy Peterson in putting together a very memorable Memorial Day observance yesterday. It was very classy, very, very well done. We had a wonderful speaker in General Robbie Robertson. This year, I have to compliment Councilman Grab. This year, the city council got to sit in the shade, which was a little better than last year, although it was a very nice day yesterday. But this particular observance, I think, put on display just some of the best attributes of our city. And there were many people there. I don't know how many, but there were many people. And I'm sorry, I'm forgetting also. The municipal band, of course, played a stellar role there as well. So my hat, my hat is always off, but anyway, to Councilman Grab and Stacy Peterson for the wonderful job they did in putting this together.
How about applause for them? Thank you very much. Thank you for your leadership. That's a great way to end new business. Madam Clerk?
We are at Citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
I have seven or eight cards. First, I want to recognize Jeff Fick. Mr. Fick?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Jeff Fick, and I'm here tonight with my wife Jill. We live at 2253 West Augusta Drive on the far northern edge of the city. We've lived in our home for over 17 years. Your packet includes a picture, the third to the last picture, of a small 30-inch storm sewer in our backyard that's intended to drain about 10 acres of farm field, and it works. It's worked effectively for the 17 years we've worked there. It's about five acres of timber and about five acres of farmland. I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the preliminary plat for the Gray Oak subdivision some, what, I think, four or five weeks ago, and expressed concern that the design of the plat had the water running all toward Augusta and all toward the small drainage culvert in my backyard, or a significant portion of the early phases. In response to my concerns, the developer agreed to provide the stormwater runoff plan and calculations, which he did two weeks ago. Those plans, at that time, showed nearly 30 houses, more than in Augusta Estates, running through that small culvert in my backyard, and both of those 700-foot cul-de-sacs that have about a 60-foot drop in elevation. I objected, as I have consistently, to that additional runoff through my yard and through our subdivision. Mr. Dean agreed at that time to reduce the runoff to the original size of the watershed that drains through my yard, 12 houses, and agreed, now I understand, to hold a 500-year rain. In addition to meeting city code, in my opinion, I submit, and I spoke with Mr. Hayes and I spoke with Mr. Yuric, thank you both for your time to listen to my concerns. The city is obligated to follow state drainage law, and those two cul-de-sacs will be owned by the city. And those two cul-de-sacs will run water down the street through the storm sewers, again owned by the city, into Augusta and some of it into my yard. Under city or under state law, the right to run that water is not unlimited, and it must be retained. Now, I understand tonight that, and in speaking with Mr. Dean, that there will be a number of detention basins. But I submit the current plan has all of those detention basins right next to Augusta, right next to our property. I'm not aware of a single other subdivision. In North Peoria, the area I'm familiar with, it has detention basins that drain into somebody's yard when they fill up, though I know we're going to hold them to an eight- or nine-inch rain. But if there's multiple days of heavy rain, or if those detention basins become clogged, don't de-water soon enough, the water that overtops is going to come into yards. So I submit in request that when the city works with the developer, that the developer be required to retain some of that water within Gray Oak, not to put the risk on an established neighborhood. There should be internal retention ponds within that neighborhood to hold the water permanently, not to put it all down through Augusta. So my request for the city staff and for the city council is to insist that good development practices be followed and all the risk not put on Augusta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fick. We have Todd Baker. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Todd Baker. I'm here representing Augusta Estates as the president of the HOA, homeowners association. We agree in general with the comments made by Jeff Fick and thank him for all the work he's done with the city council members and the builder over the last month to help work through a lot of our concerns. The fact is that the property that's being developed sits up on elevation above our property, and that puts a great concern to us. I'd like to submit tonight a petition which lists the concerns that our subdivision has with this development. We'd like to ask that this be submitted with record. There are 17 members of our residents that have signed this just to, you know, proclaim, I guess, the significance of this. And as we go forward, we really look to the city council to uphold the final plat approval to what we discussed today with the 500-year storm, as well as upholding the intent of not causing catastrophic harm to our existing neighborhood through proper stormwater retention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. You can provide that petition to our city clerk. We have Mick Hall.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit more about Gray Oak subdivision. I live on Glenshire Drive, which is in the Glenwood subdivision. It will abut the south end of the proposed Gray Oak subdivision. I wanted to thank Councilman Seer for listening to the constituents, some of whom are here, about our concerns about a suggestion that was made either by staff or by the commission below to extend Glenshire Drive as a second entrance, potentially a second entrance for Gray Oak. And the reason that I wanted to speak, even though Councilman Seer has offered as part of his motion that there be only one entrance here, was just the idea that when you have an established subdivision where people have lived for years, for staff or council, or I'm sorry, or one of the commission members, to suggest that the nature of an existing subdivision change for the benefit of a new subdivision seems onerous. And so I hope that when the final plat comes for approval, that there won't be an extension on, from Glenshire into this particular subdivision. But more importantly, just broadly, as we continue to grow, which I hope we continue to grow in the 5th district, that any time a developer brings a plat forward where there's some suggestion that some new burden be placed on an existing subdivision, that that should raise the attention of the staff members and, of course, everyone here at the Horseshoe. Thank you.
You're welcome. Gary Blood?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I also am a resident of the same subdivision, Devonshire Estates. The only thing I would plead with you is that we understand fire and police want a secondary access after the subdivision matures. And all I would say is, apply common sense to that. There is an existing road that comes in from Knoxville with traffic lights. It has a service road, Service Road Number Two. It all comes together on the east side of this proposed subdivision. It makes total sense that most of the paving is already done, and it really resides mostly to just put an access road into the new subdivision. So all I would say is, please consider the common sense aspect of this as you make your considerations and as it goes through the maturity of each phase of the decisions being made here. I've been a resident there since 2001. The subdivision was started in 2000. There's 43 residents there, and we live on this wonderful little racetrack. It's one road in, one road out, with the two roads connecting in an oval. It's a great place to live. I moved there from Connecticut in 2001. Go Bruins! And, you know, it's just a great place. But considering new traffic for that southern end of this new proposed subdivision, I think would be a challenge. And as a resident of this subdivision, just the streets alone at our subdivision, it's been seal-coated twice. Once early on with pea gravel, the second time, probably about 10 years ago, with inexpensive slag, crushed slag, and the roads look terrible. They're cracking, breaking, and everything. So considering more traffic on that and no plans to address fixing our roads, it just doesn't make sense. So please, use common sense on all of this. That's all I'm asking. Thank you for your time and attention.
You're welcome. We have Willard Gambert. I may not have pronounced that correctly.
That's all right. It's Bill Gobert. That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. First of all, Councilman Seer, it's good to see you tonight. I appreciate the email correspondence we had. I am also part of the Devonshire Estates subdivision, and we've already talked about Gray Oak quite a bit, but I'll just say that my only comment here is, one, I thank you for making the waiver adjustment to not connect to Devonshire Estates. I just echo what Mick mentioned earlier in that as we move forward past the preliminary plat, we would ask that you don't bring that back up again in a year or two when that starts being developed. Again, as Gary mentioned, he's been in the neighborhood for 20-some years. I've been his neighbor for seven. We like the neighborhood the way it is. There's 40, 45 houses there, and a lot of us have small children, and we like the small community that's been set there, and we think that the additional traffic and the additional throughway, so to speak, would cause additional problems for our neighborhood, and it's already established. So we would offer alternatives, like looking at that county road behind Knuckles Pizza there as more of a better alternative for the new subdivision, which, again, I think is great for the community. But I appreciate, appreciate your time. And again, Councilman Seer, thank you for making that adjustment.
You're welcome. Maroslaw Kosiak?
Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen. So my colleagues, and I live in Devonshire subdivision, and my colleagues already expressed lots of concerns, some of which I'm going to repeat, but my number-one concern is the stormwater and sewage. So the concern is that the existing infrastructure does work most of the time very well, but with additional burden influx of water, it may simply not handle water properly. And it would be good to perform engineering measurements, hire a company to confirm that the additional runoff of water will not overwhelm the infrastructure. The second, less important issue is obviously if the second exit would go through Glenshire subdivision, obviously that would impact the existing experience, which is fantastic. I live on Glenshire Street, and by my calculations, the traffic would go up four times, and that is substantial. We already have issues with people thinking that BMWs are, or other vehicles, are race machines. With four times the traffic, there can be a substantial problem and potentially fatalities in kids and even animals. So I basically would ask for the council to carefully look at the whole picture and assess the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ben Miller?
You, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I also live in Devonshire Estates. Thank you, Councilman Seer, for just hearing some of the concerns that we've had. Just want to reiterate the impact it would have to our neighborhood. I've lived in Devonshire for four years. I have three young children. They love playing outside. I know many of the other families in the neighborhood where children live, and we know where kids are most likely to be outside. We also live at the very top of the loop, and so we probably have the least traffic by our home because the only traffic is those entering those homes immediately next to us. So my great concern would be a great increase in volume of traffic if that connector road were extended off of Glenshire. So again, similar to my neighbors, would very much request that the final plat would take this into consideration and would not include that connector road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for all the comments regarding the Gray Oak subdivision. They've been heard and received and taken into the record and will be taken into consideration. We do have one more comment, citizens' comment, and that's Dorey Cody.
Pardon my lack of penmanship. It's Darcy Katie. So, good evening, Dr. Madam Mayor, as well as council members. So I've returned to speak tonight about the plight of innocent Palestinians that are being exterminated with the aid of local tax dollars and to ask that the council please consider taking a ceasefire resolution to a vote. The reasons why a ceasefire resolution are necessary appear to be clear to me as well as other community members, and yet the members of the council have chosen not to move forward with voting on said matter at this time. with voting on said matter at this time. We are at a loss. As I stated last time, I addressed the council that the seal of neutrality in a foreign affair was broken when our government decided to continue sending funds to Israel with tax dollars from its own states. Therefore, I believe it is a reasonable request for the council to vote on a ceasefire resolution as it pertains to local tax dollars not being used to fund a humanitarian crisis and genocide in Palestine per the preferences of local citizens who are contributing said tax dollars and deserve to have a say in how this money is being used. Currently, 45,000 Palestinians have been killed since October 2023. Innocent people huddled in what's left of their homes, if they're lucky, and mostly in makeshift tents made with plastic and random material found scattered about after bombings. And yet, these innocent civilians are deemed a threat by the Israeli government and are indiscriminately bombed. When I spoke in February, I explained how the Israeli military conducts these bombings. From October 2023 to February 2024, Israel continued to consistently drop leaflets from the sky in designated areas, prompting innocent Palestinian civilians to flee further and further south into safe zones as instructed by the Israeli military on said leaflets. Simultaneously, Egypt would effectively close its borders, leaving more than 1.5 million innocent Palestinians trapped in Rafa, the southernmost part of Gaza Strip. From February 2024, when I last spoke to you all, to present day, Rafa, the designated safe zone, has been repeatedly bombed, most recently just three days ago on May 25th, when six rockets struck an encampment of tents. Just outside of Rafa in Malwazi, a designated safe zone, as Rafa is no longer considered one according to leaflets dropped by the Israeli military. Mostly women and children were killed of the 50 that died in this bombing. It was determined by medical staff in Han Yunis, at Han Yunis Hospital, that they were burned alive. There are no safe zones in Gaza Strip. Since there are no safe zones, and innocent civilians have been indiscriminately bombed for the last seven months, I can only logically conclude, excuse me, that these actions by the Israeli military were never about anything other than the genocide of the Palestinian people. And this is why all of you must rise to the occasion and hear the call of your community, please, that we do not want to support a genocide with our tax dollars. You do have the power to help create this change, in part, by taking a ceasefire resolution to a vote and supporting it. Please do not let an action towards the genocide of the Palestinian people be your political legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our citizens' comments. Madam Clerk?
We are at executive session.
I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following the adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C5 to discuss the purchase of real property for the use of the public body, including discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C21 for approval by the body of closed session minutes. And this will be a roll call vote, moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jackson and Kelly? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.